Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Halifax Port of Selectmen's Meeting, House of Selectmen present on this day, September 24th. We should be noted that Area 58 is filming this, and it can be seen on YouTube as well. First thing on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions to the agenda of six weeks?
Not for me.
Okay. First thing then, Gordon, do you want to...
Do I need to...
On the agenda?
No. So I can... Well, I can't. I can't do the first two.
Yeah, because he just... You were just... Yeah, that was why.
I'll move the executive session from May 7, 2019, first session, where Mr. Garen and only myself were present.
And the second session, same date?
I'll do them all. Also move the executive session from May 7, 2019, the second session, as you mentioned, where Mr. Garen and myself were the only ones present.
I'll second those. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gordon?
Obey.
Okay. Yep, sorry. Okay. Motion to approve executive session, May 28, 2019, and executive session, June 11, 2019?
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Okay. Ready? Okay. I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 24 for $386,708.98. Venda warrant number 25 for $139,049.50. Withholding warrant number 26 for $141,292.91. Ambulance commitment from September 2 to September 8, 2019 for $98,822.5. And ambulance commitment from September 9...
Oh, yeah, thank you. 19...
September 9, 2019, to September 15, 2019, for $60,611.78.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the following... Venda warrant number 27 for $155,576.57.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I move to approve payment of the Selectmen bills dated September 24, 2019. So we have from the law line, $210 to Labor Relations Connection.
Right, that's for an arbitration hearing.
Town Hall Electricity, $1,064.65. The Law Line, $1,237.50. This is the KP Law for professional services through July 31st. And that's its own.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Charlie?
I'm going through the mail. John Peck had called me yesterday or Monday because of his health problems and the health problems for members of his family, owing the cost of providing an engineer's plan for the work dimension would cost him $6,000. I don't know that he understood how to take full advantage of the possibilities of the Selectmen granting waivers for the application, although I point that out to him in previous conversations. He said the board of Selectmen should take whatever action the board felt was appropriate. The fines for the violation of this bylaw are $20 per cubic yard. If the board wished to levy a fine for the entire amount removed, this would be something on the order of $24,000. If the board decided to fine for the amount over 1,000 cubic yards, which is the number at which point you do need the permit, the board could issue a fine for about 4,000. I don't think it was exactly 1,200. I think it was like 1,260 or something like that, in terms of the number of cubic yards removed.
Oh, yeah, I think that, yeah.
But the fine listed in the bylaws is at $20 per cubic yard. So I don't know what the board would like to do in terms of taking whatever action it felt deemed necessary.
Unfortunately, this has been going on for quite some time now, and I think it is due for us to take some type of action on this at this time. I think we've been very lenient with this particular incident. I'm not sure what the board wants to do at this time. My recommendation is to levy the fine, and we can always come back to revisit it another time.
Which fine are we talking about, Troy?
4,000.
What's our history been on actual levying of fines?
We haven't had to.
Yeah, that's...
I mean, back, you know, we had a lot more earth removal going on back 20 years ago, first of all. Second of all, the earth removal we've had going on, especially in the last 10 years, has been minimal, but people have gotten the necessary permits and such.
Right.
And this just hasn't entered into the equation at all.
Well, I'd be inclined to support Mr. Garen's proposal.
So it'd be $20 per cubic yard for anything above 1,000?
Yeah. Have we... How would we determine how much?
Well, he sent a note from this earth removal company.
Oh, okay. All right. I was just curious if we...
I just wanted to be sure. We're going by his number, if you want to.
Tom had asked at that meeting about the slips, if we could contact them or something along those lines. Did we, or...
I think we did. I don't know that we got anything back, but I'll check.
We didn't get anything back. I mean, I think this is what Joey had provided, or what the guy had given us was a letter, you know?
I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm sensitive to what's going on with the health and everything else, but fair is fair.
Well, there'd be no way for us to determine what came on, that they were under any circumstances.
Right. If he's been taking out the pond, we would have had to have had an engineering plan or one here before the workers began to know what the difference is in the pond bottom between then and now.
I don't have a problem supporting...
I mean, I'm open for other suggestions.
I'm on board with you.
Gordon?
I'm fine with issuing the fine. He doesn't think he's going to submit any paperwork.
I don't think so. I mean, when I talked on Monday, he basically figuratively was throwing his hands up, saying, "Just do whatever you want to do." I think, you know, in his setting aside anything else, he has a number of other priorities besides this. And I'm not saying he's wrong. I would have hoped he would have had somebody take over this and handle this for him, for whatever reason he's decided he declined to do that. But between his health and the health of his family, if he's going to be putting time and energy into anything, that's what he's putting it into.
I would move that we issue the $20 per fine on cubic, for each cubic yard above 1,000 that we received.
The information from yet. All right.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
407 South Street, some good news at least. Court issued a vacation of judgment and withdrawal, the foreclosure case, and the town no longer owns the property. PM can inform the neighbor who has been calling about getting the lawn mowed and such, that we no longer own the property. There is no bylaw in town that says you have to mow your lawn. So we're out of that business, and my hope is that the interested parties will make a go of it. And I don't know what their exact plans are for the lot, but it's a buildable lot. Obviously, they probably have to demolish what's there, but at least maybe in the future we'll have some new construction and make it look better.
Did you let them know about the pest management issue?
Yes.
The neighbors, yes?
Yes. I sent a letter to the butters, just updating them as to what was going on with the property, that we had used the pest management firm while we owned it, that I had notified the interested parties who were buying the property of this, and that they probably should continue to do this.
One of the conditions of a demolition permit, in addition to anything that's been happening, is that they do a infestation inspection and/or remedy.
And Rob can remind them of that one. Generations Fun Day, Generations is going to hold a Family Fun Day on Saturday, October 5, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at 65 County Road in Plimpton. It's going to feature a number of activities, including Cow Flop. I know I've put some information on a copy of the flyer up on the town's website, and this is Generations is the multi-generational group that helps support council aging activities. Stuff to sign, category one. Municipal School, that's what it's called. Massachusetts School Building Authority, despite the fact we had Troy sign the forms a couple of weeks ago, they said, "Well, we like everybody's thing at Toronto." And they even had okayed at once with Troy's thing at Toronto. So if everybody, despite the fact that there are not lines for everybody, if everybody could sign this, you've already approved it and everything, that includes Troy.
What do you mean, I gotta sign it again?
Yeah, you gotta sign it again, Troy.
And it's 7:40, so...
So we are at...
I'm gonna sign first.
The revocation hearing for Twin Lakes Liquors. We did do the transfer. I did send a note out to the previous and, I guess, current owners of the license, and I don't know if the property's changed hands yet, I don't think it has, but saying, you know, two things have to be happening. One is that the taxes need to be paid in order for the license to be transferred, and also for the business to operate, they're going to have to get the necessary building permits to the reconstruction, everything like that. Other than a couple of acknowledgements, saying, "Oh, yeah, I received the information. As far as I know, nothing's happened." The taxes are still owed. So my recommendation at this point would be to continue the hearing to...
Pam would put it in, or Ellen would put it in?
A few weeks from now, either a month from now, on the 22nd, or we could do it on the 12th, and ask them direct specifically to come in, both to, if my old days will start catching up on the taxes, but also to get a plan in to, and I don't mean in a sense of that you'll approve the plan or anything, but just some evidence that progress is being made in terms of...
Why don't we shoot for November 12, in Tampa time?
Yeah. I'll put them in for 7:45, so continue the hearing until then if the board would approve that.
So is the property itself that in bad at conditions?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Twin Lakes, the liquor store?
Part of this file now.
So will they have to reconstruct the whole building?
Whatever they're gonna present to me will deal with the rest of it. They have to make arrangements in the process of presenting.
The worst part of the building is the part not being...
To the left of five, all right.
It's in a state of collapse.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move to continue the revocation hearing until November 12 at...
7:45.
7:45.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council on Aging Director, just to confirm to the board and to the general public, we are not having the interviews tomorrow. We are having interviews on October 1. Interviews are at the same time, so starting at 6:00 and going for 45 minutes for each of the four candidates. You'll be here in the Selectmen's meeting room. The interviews are open to the public. It's not, however, a participatory meeting. Public's welcome to attend and listen, but we're not getting questions out of the audience. Seabee ambulance abatement for August 2019, $125,688.54.
Any motion?
Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Just a question. How are we doing? Because looking at the last few months, it seems like the ambulance revenue has really fallen off.
I can check with Sandy, see where things stand.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Let's see, we do...
We have an appointment at 7:45. I don't see anyone here.
Maybe still... Pam, did they know that they... Did we say that they should come in for early?
Yeah, I told them.
Okay, well, give them a couple more minutes.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I think I hear...
Well, here's somebody in the hallway.
Don't hold your breath.
I'll just continue until they get down to the end of the hallway. There's a new, no new littering, carry-in, carry-out sign over at the boat ramp, just on Pots and Waters Association, she had noticed that and sent me a copy of the photograph. So, and still doesn't mean that people aren't going to litter, but at least there's some encouragement there.
We got Seabee Park over there, watch the moonlight, rise of Lake.
Yes. The Board of Assessors, I want to thank them, the staff, for the work they did on this. We reviewed the list that Brian Cook sent of all the properties his interest in purchasing. There are a number of parcels numbers that they couldn't find, in a sense of they think they don't exist. And then two is probably at least a dozen or so, where there are properties that, at least according to their records, are owned by other parties. What I'd like to do is go back, work with them and with the collector's office to confirm whether these properties are of low value, in a sense of the back taxes weren't so minimal that we didn't go through the foreclosure process, and whether they're eligible for us to take, or what the situation. Some of them might be that the costs are paid, I don't know. But I'm going to continue working on that with the collectors and the assessors, and get back to the board in a couple of weeks.
That was quite the project for the staff. They did their job.
And your 7:45, I believe, is here?
Nope.
No, it's 7:50.
That's 7:50, okay.
We could take the 7:50 unless there's some objections.
Well, it's just about 7:50 now, so...
And that's...
Up, it's 7:45.
Come on up, please.
Come on down. All I want to know is who's going to be sober during the whole festival?
Drunken can.
So you're saying you're not going to drink during the festival, but doesn't say before?
Before or after.
After. We haven't had this every year, but we've had it most years, the last few years, and everything's worked out.
Yep. About 30 years, I think, is the budget.
Yeah, I don't remember any complaints. Police Department has had no problems.
They signed off, peace and fire, and Board Health is all set.
So they've dotted their i's and crossed the t's?
They're in town again.
Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve a one-day liquor license for Our Lady of the Lake Oktoberfest. What is the date that we...
20th of October.
It was 20th of October.
20th of October, 2019.
I will be happy to second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
Can I get you a copy of this? I've just been having a sigh.
Come on over there. The Oktoberfest, you'll enjoy it.
Dad have Phillips here. Oh, so it's all...
Should I bring my own Coca-Cola?
No, we have Coke and water, it's only for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is Mrs. Burke, I take it?
Yes, it is.
And you want to count money?
I did for 30 years at NACs, so it's...
Isn't that tired, you?
No, I'm not tired yet, so, you know, I kind of miss it, actually.
Oh. I see you brought her bodyguard with you.
Yeah.
So you want to be with the Finance Committee, and why?
I just, I'd like to put a little something into the town. I might get here, I've been here about a year and a half.
Excellent.
I will admit that I'm a city girl. I grew up in Brockton, and actually, my brother is a city councillor in the city of Brockton. Dennis and Ery.
No way, Dennis is your brother-in-law?
This is my brother, yes, he is. And then I moved to Quincy, Black Tanyas, and I know the government's a differing, you know, sort of thing, but I do kind of know my way around, you know, the spreadsheet with...
Well, Brockton's got $10, we got a buck and a half.
Yeah. I'm not sure of that anymore, too, but yeah. And I just thought I would like to be involved, and I go outside of the town.
Have you been to one of the Finance Committee meetings yet? Did he explain to you what your responsibilities are?
Yes, she knows.
Last night, they did, yes.
And you realize this is, because you're on the Finance Committee, it's unpaid.
I understand that as well. It's volunteer.
And it's a commitment through the budget season.
Through the process.
Yeah.
Bill and Melinda explained the time commitment, Monday nights?
They did. It's your mission. I'm retired.
And you still want to do it?
I do.
It's excellent.
Is there a motion?
So what the board was doing in this case would be authorize the chair to vote on behalf of the board. We have Representative for the Finance Committee here, just need a vote from him and a vote from you.
Would we allow Troy to vote on behalf of the Selectmen?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I would make a motion that we accept Chair Burke's invitation to be on the Finance Committee, to term ending...
June 15, 2021.
Oh, they're gonna make it longer than that.
Was it, was it...
Make it even...
I know, I know. I'm just kidding.
That's the good two years, I already said...
Trying to be humorous here.
Make it an even number, 30 years, right?
I don't think I'll be around in 30 years, but...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And welcome to Halifax.
Can you tell what's going on?
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have Boyd sign the card, okay? And then I will bring it down to the clerk's office. I will send you a letter in the mail, saying you can come in and get sworn in with the town clerk. Just call there before you go, just make sure she's there.
Okay.
Okay?
And the next Finance Committee meeting is October 7.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Sorry, Gordon?
And Brockton's a small town, I'm from Chicago.
You're from Chicago? Wow, yes, Brockton is a small town compared to Chicago. It's the same issue as though Chicago has, Brockton has.
Yeah, because I used to live in Chicago, now I'm here, so I got the same issue.
Same issue.
Sorry, Gordon?
Has Len's resignation taken effect yet? So you'll have five members for about two meetings?
Yeah, he just told no, so he could make one.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's a pleasure.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Troy is on?
Yeah.
Troy, yes, I'm on. Okay, so Water Department, Todd and Howard, two copies of the contract for engineering firm to provide services at the White Camp at Richmond Park. Everyone needs to sign these, too.
I just hope the board approve the contract.
All in favor? Second. Any further discussion?
Who's second?
Nope.
Everyone's voices.
All in favor?
Aye.
Troy, Tom seconded.
Tom seconded.
Yeah, you guys all sound sane. Okay.
Hanging around, looking to me, looking like each other, we got a problem.
You guys have to really get your voices...
So Traffic Safety Committee met earlier this month, there was consensus that all the possible options for the sidewalk that is near Hemlock Lane and the intersection of Plymouth Street aren't great, there are deficiencies with all of them, but Steve's going to continue to look at the possibilities and come back to see, pick one possibly or not pick one, but come back to the board. There was also consensus eliminate the triangle at Pond and El. The north leg of it would be eliminated, the torn-up grass would be put in, and all traffic would be diverted to the south leg. And I did want to find out whether the board would like to have some type of public forum to provide, and get any comments, because obviously, well, in one sense it really isn't a significant change, nevertheless, it will be a very obvious change, and people will wonder, "Wait a minute, what's going on here?"
I think it's a good idea. We could incorporate it into a meeting.
Yeah.
And help Steve come in.
Yeah, I'll put it in for a future meeting.
Shouldn't take very long, a few minutes.
Just on the fragments policy, I did publicize the board's reiteration, there's no other action, the board needs to take on that. We did get a recycling abatement for fiscal '24, Bill 1953. The resident said the letter from Julie was emailed to his wife's phone, but they weren't able to print it out. Julie sent a paper letter on September 18, and the resident brought it in today with the application of the abatement. We checked the files back for last year, it was denied an abatement last year because he was late. Unfortunately, he's now more than a couple of weeks late again, so I don't know what the board would want to do of this.
Hate these.
There's a copy of this, so you have...
Are we going to have a discussion with recycling and solid waste about the whole process and the abatements? Because we had talked about that. Again, if we're not providing the service, I think we should give the abatement, but I know that's not the feeling in the board.
Or if you wanted to do that, you could do that en masse, in a sense of, say, no abatements are necessary, some point in the future.
I think we need to have that discussion first before we do that.
It's part of probably the slogan, you know, we get the committee together and such. So Pam, at this point, they didn't decide not to take any action on this, or unless the board wants to make a positive vote not to abate?
Well, that's what I'm leaning towards. I mean, we've got two years on the roadway. He was told in his bill, it was noted on the bill when the abatements were due, and I can appreciate him faxing it to a phone, but at the same time, we didn't fax anything to him, he can come in and fill it. That's just my feelings on it.
I'm agreeing that, you know, if we do this, we've got to go back and revisit all of them.
So either the board is taking no action, or the board needs to take a positive action not to abate?
I would move that we do not abate at this time.
I'll second that.
Can you both, I guess, call for Isidors?
Yes, call the vote.
Gordon?
I'll vote yea, because Beck told me a long time ago, if you want to reconsider, you have to vote in favor.
Yes.
Yes.
Speaking of the Waste Management Committee, the Finance Committee said the frame of government could serve in the Finance Committee for that, and also that Glenda Tersey would serve on the Council on Aging and Building Committee, when we got that organized also. For Dale Dana Road Parcels, the board CC'd on correspondence between Plymouth County and the Division of Capital Asset Management. I'll return to this when we're tied up, the town meeting articles in a little while later. Just, it's on the record that we have that mail from Plymouth County. There's a family in medical leave request for Irma Vassal, which the board needs to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We did get a public records request from Attorney Adam Brodsky. He wanted documents related to the proposed articles 5, 7, 9, and 12, for the special town meeting warrant on October 21, and those materials have been sent to him. On the non-resident taxpayer fee, I heard back from two members of the Parks Commission, there were only two members, because we had one resignation right before the election. John Campbell was opposed, as he felt that allowing this would cost the town money in order to force any changes. Though I'm not quite sure what it would cost, since we checked the property anyway.
We're already enforcing it, as it is.
Tom Strindler would like to see it happen and have any money raised placed in a separate revolving fund for beach and park improvements, which we could set up. I don't know that it's going to be a large amount, but we can still get up a revolving fund. Does the board want to set up an appointment for the Parks Commission, along with any other interested parties, to discuss this idea or some more?
I think yes.
Sure, discussion's better than no discussion.
Okay.
So, the reason I say yes, I like to see where the Parks Commission's heads are. I know they're saying yes now, but...
Well, one of them's saying yes, one of them's saying no. It's confusing, because the one who said no said he was, the entire Parks Commission was saying no, and yet the other member was saying yes, so... But I'll get them in anybody else, probably a couple weeks from now. You're, I believe, at 8 o'clock. And the discussion was, the time was set aside for the regulatory boards to come in to discuss hiring procedures for the staff that are there.
Gordon, are you the only person that's shot today?
Looks like it. I just think that the planning board, as a voted member of the board of the town, should have some say in the secretary. I mean, we have other boards, we have the Finance Committee who picks their own secretary. We have no say. We're not even informed of what the hours are that the secretary's in here. We have no say, we're not even informed of what the hours are that the secretary's in here. I've asked, I don't get an answer back. Secretary, we had a secretary that resigned, and then said that was gonna fill in, and we had three meetings of which, at the last minute, she just says, "I'm not gonna make it." One time we came in, the room's locked, nothing is set out, I mean, who do people report to? They don't report to us, so I mean, it's like, you know, who are they loyal to?
Well, okay, there's two different things going on there, I don't like the word loyal.
Well?
Well, because, I mean, I think the first question is legitimate, who do they report to, in this case, that they report to Rob. And this was set up more than fifteen years ago, would the board have helped the planning board and zoning, no, sorry, Conservation, ZVA and the planning board, because we had a situation we were trying to deal with, which was that all those positions, all administrative positions are part-time positions. And we wanted to try and get both, A, better coverage, so that we were hoping to have somebody there from one of those boards at all times during our regular business hours, with the idea that at the very least, each of those people would have enough information that while they could not go into depth with someone coming in looking for information on a specific topic, they would be able to at least give them preliminary information, forms, applications, things like that, get messages into the other staff members and such. And that, for having an apartment head, in the sense of someone supervising those three individuals, the best person to do that was a building inspector, because that was the person who was in essence, both in terms of geography, but also in terms of subject area, the closest person, closest department head to those positions. And we had, and I was here for those selectmen's meetings when we had everybody here and discussed that, and that's what we worked out. If the planning board's looking for a change and how that's going to work, I'm not saying you shouldn't be able to do that, you're here to do that right now, possibly. But that's how it originated. And so if there are, if there are employee issues, in the sense of the planning board's unhappy with the staff, then the planning board should be speaking to Rob about that.
Well, I just, I just think the planning board should be able to act as the planning board. I mean, what is said to these people when they come in here? I said that we wanted to be part of the hiring process. We've got no information, I came in here before the secretary was hired, and I was told, "We'll have a meeting with you." Well, it's now September, the secretary's already been hired. I think that we've been like, just walked over, we tried to participate in it, we tried to find out what was going on, and we got blown off. And it's frustrating, I mean, we're a volunteer board, you know? We try to do our job, and we ask for something, and we don't get anything back. So that's why I said, where's the loyalty, only because, you know, we're an elected board. If the secretary doesn't do what we have to have done, we're at stake, not Rob, we are. So, where is it that he comes in to mandate that these things get done? I mean, what is the process? That's what I'm asking for. I'm not saying something is wrong, but what is that process?
It's in the job description.
Well, where is the job description? Because the planning board doesn't even see it.
They're everywhere.
That's what I'm telling you. So we're just...
Did you ask for a job description?
Aren't we entitled to find out when I asked you?
You didn't ask me, yeah.
Yes, we did, I came down here and asked the selectmen.
Oh, so you made it sound like you asked me personally.
No, not even personally, it's the board. I came down and asked, because the hiring process was going on, I know I get excited, but the process was going on. I just wanted to be included in that, that's all. It's not like we're gonna look at the major change or anything, but it's like a courtesy.
One of the problems was simply a timing issue, in that the planning board, since it only meets twice a month, when you made, for instance, you said, "We'd like to do this," and we're at a planning board meeting, that information didn't get to anybody in time?
I came here with it.
Yeah, but when you came here, the person, the position had already been filled.
No, no, it wasn't. No, it wasn't. And even if it was, we couldn't have been informed of what was going on? It's like, I went back to the board and I said, "I don't know, they don't want us to know." That's how it felt, okay? Now, maybe it's not, maybe it's not what you wanted, but that's how we felt. What are the hours of the secretary? Are they posted?
I believe they are.
It's a question.
Nine to two.
What days?
The planning board, she's here Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
What about the meetings?
What about, what meetings, your meetings?
Yeah.
She attends your meetings. And as far as giving direction, it's up to the board to give the secretary direction, not me.
That's what I'm getting at.
That's right.
Well, I was just told to give me the secretary's.
Excuse me.
No, I was just told to go to you. And that's why I'm asking, what is the procedure here? That's all.
I think there's two different things that have been mentioned, one is terms of giving the everyday direction, in the sense of, the planning board is asking the person who's there for the means and such to send a letter, do this, do that. That's the everyday work of the planning board, and that person should be doing that, they don't have to, the planning board does not have to send those requests through Rob, but if they have a complaint about the person's job performance, the person is not doing it. Certainly, you have a right to complain, and that person's supervisor is Rob. So if there is a complaint about that person's job performance, as opposed to the, please do get this letter out type of request, then it should go to Rob.
So the problems become, though, when you don't have a secretary present at the meeting, and the job performance is not happening. I mean, that's been the issue, there's been requests by the planning board to have things done, and it's not done in the time that needs to be accomplished, and that's the issue for the planning board.
Are you talking currently?
Oh, over the past six months, I mean, there's other issues as well, there's been records that have been destroyed.
Okay.
It's not an allegation, it's the truth.
No, okay, no, you don't want to go there, Gordon.
Okay.
You really don't.
Well, let's not, let's not get off track. What I'm here for is, the planning board wants to be informed of what that is.
And I'd just like to say, I don't believe it's been six months, Terry left the job on her own will. She left, and she's been trying to help all with the new hire, trying to guide her where she can. If she's no longer the planning board secretary, it's not her duty.
So whose duty is it?
It's with the new secretaries.
Well, whose was it in the interim when she said she was gonna fill in? When who's, Terry said she was gonna fill in. And here's my complaint about that, she said she was gonna fill in, I saw her on the day of the meeting, she said, "I'll see you tonight." She said something came up and she didn't come in, okay? So if something came up and we were able to contact Lana, maybe Lana could have filled it, that's what I'm getting at, so it's like...
And that's understandable.
Right, when you were left in the lurch for three meetings...
But the board members also will come in at some point also, and how is that done? So I would think that it's, you know, it's common courtesy to let people know if you're not coming in, and from what you said, I think she did that.
I don't think criticizing the board members for not coming in is...
I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying the similar situations.
Excuse me, let's get back on track, the track is that you want to be involved in the hiring process. The process has been established for fifteen years, and that, in my mind, that's the way it should remain. I think it should be made aware, when you need somebody in the room, yes, you have a right to complain about that, because you need somebody to technically take care of. But during the interim, if the individual had no responsibility, I'm sure she said she was, that the responsibility to continue doing that, then there's nothing you can do about it.
Then who fills in for that gal? You're telling me Rob's in charge?
That's the issue we need to talk about.
You're saying Rob's in charge?
Well, again, so you're telling me your last statement was that Terry was filling in, and she gave you notice that she couldn't make it?
At the last minute, yes.
Well, in the last minute, so I don't know what she ran into.
The meeting room was locked, and there was nothing out.
And do you have a key?
To the room? No.
Oh, okay.
Nobody on the planning board has a key to the room?
No.
Well, that's just wrong, you should have asked for a key a long time ago.
All right, ask for a key then.
Yeah, you should have a key to the meeting room, absolutely, that's not even debatable.
So I think the performance of the person should be written by the board that they serve. Because I did that for the Finance Committee, we had a Finance Committee secretary, we wrote her performance.
You're talking about performance or job responsibilities?
Performance.
And that...
Because how does Rob know whether or not the board is satisfied with the performance of that person?
If I was doing, if I was Rob and I was doing the evaluation at first, I would in fact contact the planning board and ask for their comments in writing up the evaluation every year.
And I'm assuming that that hasn't been happening?
Well, we write up evaluations, but we don't get kind of any comments, negative comments.
So have you reached out for comments from the planning board to find out? Because Charlie just said...
If the planning board has issues, they can contact...
But that's the problem, is that if you're writing the report, then you should be reaching out to them. Because you're writing a report for their secretary, that's why it's, that's why it's not working. Because if the board is responsible to get things done, right?
Okay, so are we talking, listen, are we talking about the past month or two, or are we...
I'm talking just general, like, over the whole time, if you're writing a report, are you getting a report from the zoning board on Alana? Are you getting a report for the, from Conservation on...
I'm getting a report for duties that I have with them.
But how do you know if they're fulfilling the duties of that?
They're fulfilling their everyday duties with me in my office. If the planning board isn't happy, they're more than willing to, they're more than happy to come in, I can talk to them and we can go over it. This is what I inherited, this has been done for the past fifteen years.
I'm not blaming you, but what I'm saying is, it's not working, because there isn't feedback getting to you for these reports.
Well, it appeared that it was working before.
Well, I can say that it wasn't working before, because...
How can you say that?
Because I filed public records request for the zoning board back in 2016, and there were years' worth of meeting minutes that weren't done.
The planning board or the zoning?
Zoning board.
Right.
There were years' worth.
And I agree with you, and that person has since left.
Right, but I'm saying, so the process hasn't worked for a long time.
Well, that's not, but that's not an evaluation process, that's somewhat, you know...
It is an evaluation process, because if the person isn't doing their job...
Before we go any farther, first of all, we've addressed an issue.
I don't think we have addressed the issue.
Needs to be dealt with, going back over what has happened in the past, not gonna help us right now. We need to deal with the situation as it is.
We should have a, may I jump in?
Yeah.
We should have a sit-down with the boards, all of them. And Rob. And copies of the job descriptions for everybody, and what these people are actually responsible for, because in some cases, I'm not saying necessarily in that case, they've been asked to do things that really is beyond their purview. I mean, they shouldn't be drafting letters, they should be taking dictation, maybe typing a letter and then sending it off for review. I know in the past, boards have asked the Regulatory Board Secretaries to draft a letter and send it off to somebody. I don't see that, and never have, as their responsibility, it's not up to them to draft.
I agree.
You know, I think this is the way to clear it up, if we need to put down in writing some procedures, let's do it. Rehashing everything in the past now is gonna do absolutely nobody any good. Let's move forward here, let's set up a meeting with somebody from each of the boards, Rob, maybe somebody from this board, sit down, review, or in the, first of all, send out copies of what the job descriptions are for the secretaries, because they're being asked in a lot of cases to do admin work. So at least everybody knows what their responsibilities are, take it from there, have a meeting, and lay out some procedures here, and I think that'll satisfy everybody moving forward.
I believe it will.
Rehashing the back stuff, there's no point.
All I want to do is straighten out the path we're going forward, and let's run down.
That's exactly what I'm saying, let's get everybody informed to number one.
Because I'm not here complaining about anybody, I'm just saying that we need to know what's going on, and like you said, the other boards should know too.
So, well, I think it starts with sending out, I mean, we do have approved job descriptions for everybody, the wage and personnel hashed them out ad nauseam. And there was almost no participation in that, incidentally, but anyway, let's get those out to the boards.
Number twelve?
No, let's get copies of that out to the boards, have them review it, and then we'll set up a meeting. I don't know that it needs to be done in this form, but we should have a meeting scheduled with the boards separately, just to deal with that issue.
Why don't we have a meeting?
Well, you have it here, I don't care, I just don't want to fill it up in, I don't want to take an hour and a half doing it.
We invited the ZVA and the Conservation here also.
In this room, I'm not talking about in here, so...
Oh, no, in this room, yeah, I'm fine with that, I just didn't want to do it in one of our regular meetings, because it takes up too much time. And I think we can resolve any issues we have, and everybody can move forward on the same page. Sounds like a plan to me.
So the directions that we're giving Charlie at this time is to invite the other boards, because this is what we did fifteen years ago, because I was there when the discussion was had. And because of the fact that most of the boards were volunteer, and temporary in the sense that some of them came and go so much, they decided that one individual should be the person supervising, somebody with a permanent position. There was not any ill will, there was not anyone to change, it was done because it was expedient at the time, it's something that was a positive effect.
Well, there's a lot of factors in play, there's inter-office dynamics, there's scheduling issues that have to be resolved to get the most coverage.
When can we meet?
Well, is it intentional for the entire board to be doing this, or is it intentional to have the...
I think the entire board is.
Okay, well, let me check with, I guess the crucial thing is to check with CONCOM and ZVA, and then also with planning. See, your hours to some extent are fairly flexible during the daytime, it may be easier to get everybody in, especially, we're talking to staff, and to hash all this out if we do it during the daytime. And I'll check with you all at planning, and with the other two boards, and see who can possibly come in during a daytime meeting, and get something set up, I hope, in the next couple of weeks.
That works for me.
Okay. Thank you.
So, let's see, our next one is at eight thirty, and we've got another fifteen minutes or so. Assessors' revaluation contract, we have one bid received from K K Valuation Group, two copies of contracts are ready to sign. This is for the Board of Assessors for the triennial revaluation they do.
We need to vote on this?
Uh, yes, you need to vote to approve.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
The selectmen received copies of complaints filed by Attorney Adam Brodsky concerning Corin C. Andrews, Corin R. Andrews, and Amy Truitt. There's no action by the boards required, but we have them here. Surplus property, the library has four Dell Opprex computers to surplus, they're running Windows 7, which is outdated, the computers were replaced with one's running Windows 10. If the board approves, they'll ask the library to have the computers shipped over to IT to determine whether they can be converted to Windows 10. And if not, send them down to recycling without hard drives.
No. No, I'll let, that's gonna go to them anyway.
So the board would approve having computer surplus?
Sub move.
Second.
In fact, abatements...
All in favor?
Aye.
Abatements and recycling fees, Susan Johnson had asked if the board would set a policy for those residents who first abate their bills and then decide that they want to participate in the recycling program, as to whether the residents need to pay the $5 late fee. The reason this is gonna come up is that she expects there are gonna be people who want to participate in the household hazardous waste day in November, but they can't because recycling fee covers that program. But they're gonna say, "Well, I want to participate," well, then pony up, but the question she wants to confirm with you all, so she can talk with the clerk's offices whether they should be paying 50 or 55. I don't see the reason to pay the late fee, because they weren't late.
They weren't having, and they didn't...
Right, right, that's where I was going.
I agree.
So, do they have to pay the whole?
Fifty, yes.
The whole fifty?
We don't have a household hazardous waste fee that's separate, in terms of determining that, you know, $9 out of 50 goes to this, or something like this.
That would be an interesting thing to add to that list of items that...
So the board would approve having, if there are folks who want to abate, who have abated but then want to come back into the recycling program with a BB $50 without the late fee?
Yes.
You want a motion?
Some. All in favor?
Aye.
So we're gonna talk about the Safety Center and Senior Center a little bit later. I did get an invite from Senator Mark Fanchico and Sierra Club, they're sponsoring a climate leadership summit on October 19th, that's a Saturday from 1:00 PM to 3:30 in Taunton, focused on climate and energy issues, including renewable energy landscape. It's unlikely I'm gonna be attending, I have a number of non-work-related activities that weekend. But the boards invited to attend, they are asking for our S B keys to ensure that they have the right amount of food. The information's here, just an update on the Mandos states in the site plan modification, the hearing's been continued to Wednesday, 25th at 7:00 PM, and then possibly Thursday, September 26th at 9:00 AM. I know Land Use Council's working with the planning board on this matter. Attorney Kramer, representing Corin Sanders, has requested that planning board member Mark May is recuse himself in voting on this matter. May is recuse himself from voting on this matter due to alleged competent interest. She also sent a more general letter objecting to the proposal from the Mandos Estates. Tom, you had mentioned when we were talking about the Trump safety committee about the flashing sign and the hours or something like that.
Yeah, the flashing speed sign out in front of the school, it was like five o'clock or something.
In the evening or the morning?
In the evening.
Okay.
And it was flashing, you know, people were slowing down and not knowing-
That's probably good to go slow.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, it was confusing.
I, I will talk to Steve Hayward on that.
It was a practice run for a lot of people.
Permission, the Boy Scouts would like permission to use town hall for their bottle and food drive on Saturday, November sixteenth from nine until noon. It will coincide with the beautification committee's cleanup date, but I don't see a logistical problem with that occurring with both, things both happening here. So if the board would approve that, and I'll also notify the beautification committee about it. Make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the special town meeting, what I ended up with were, and I think there's, there should be, I think I gave you this.
Twenty of this, yeah.
So one through twelve, six, the first six are the zoning bylaw amendments that were carried over from the May twenty nineteen annual town meeting. There are six more proposed by the planning board for zoning bylaw changes. All those were heard at the planning board hearing back on Thursday, so they all can be brought to town meeting, except that there is one marijuana, the change in the commercial zone to allow by special permit. Since I was previously voted down at town meeting last year, the planning board has to vote to recommend it. It's still going to be on the warrant, they're not, we're not going to get, they're not going to meet before I go to press, but once we get to town meeting, if the planning board isn't recommending it, they won't be able to vote on it.
Did the board of selectmen recommend or not recommend the article last year?
On the commercial?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at the minutes to see which one you, if the board did anything.
I don't know if we did.
Because it was a petition article.
Yeah, I don't think we-
So, since it was a petition article, it never even, we, it, it and the other five never got discussed at town meeting. I mean, eighteen.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'd have to go back and look at the minutes.
Okay.
I don't have any recollection.
Um, we have a stormwater bylaw that's required by U W A, it's part of the work that we have to get done on that, that's Article thirteen, fourteen. Um, we had gone by the, passed over chapter ninety, accepted the state allocation for money because they hadn't approved it yet, or will be able to do that now since that got approved. Fifteen, if the River Street pilot for the solar field there, if there's an agreement, then we'll see.
There has been absolutely no communication from the developer until recently, who now wants to reaffirm any previous decisions. I, I think the board informed him that we may have to take a, another look at it because so much time has gone by, and they're gathering-
By board, they mean the Board of Assessors.
Is this the one that you, that they're building now? Yes, yes. So they don't have an agreed pilot to something?
If they don't have a pilot, we just go straight property tax.
Right. So they can still build it, Tom? They're our building.
Yeah.
They're moving along.
I mean, getting the permit for building doesn't require a pilot. The pilot, all the pilot does is regulate how many revenue we would generate from it.
And it's to their advantage to negotiate a decent agreement.
But the property tax, it would be higher.
So is that how the town captures revenue off of solar if there's no pilot?
Right.
Regular property tax.
It gets more complicated now because the legislature's taking up an article to try, because everybody's been doing, treating it differently. So there was pressure on the legislature and the Department of Revenue to come up with a plan so that everybody could follow something similar. And in some cases, there were some proposals made that they either limited the amount of tax or eliminated the amount of tax. So a, a lot of these developers have been waiting to see what the legislation is going to do or not do, but it's getting to crunch time now so that they now want to-
Because the project's almost done, they want-
Well, they're not almost done, but they're far enough along that they want to get it squared away so that they know-
They can see the end of it and want to get, have something in place, a long-term plan.
Because they're looking for their final financing and they need to have all these agreements in place so that they know what their expenses are and get it financed.
Expenses including what the pilot revenue would be to the town, so if they're going to send a check to us making it up twenty-five thousand every six months or whatever it is, then they've got to have that in their financing package, but if they don't know what it is, they haven't got an agreement, then they can't go to the bank and say, well, this is what exactly we're going to pay out.
Long-term financing becomes a problem.
Okay. But it only, so there'll be an article to accept it, but if we, just as I believe we had to, we had an article on there back in May to accept it, if there's no agreement, then we just bypass it.
Bypass it.
Article sixteen is an unpaid bill for KP law of twenty-three sixty-nine eighty-five. Somehow, I, both Irma and myself never saw it, and then they sent us a note a couple of weeks ago saying, hey, you haven't paid this, or no, we haven't paid it. Article seventeen, special legislation for Bert Gainer to serve as a police officer as age sixty-five, that's being submitted by the police chief. What has to happen in that case is the town, if it wishes to, has to prove it at a town meeting, then in essence it creates a request for special legislation up in Boston at the state legislature, they'll have to pass it up there. If it passes, then he can serve until a specific age.
Where is the chief?
He should be in the trial.
Yeah, so they're scheduled for eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
Well, almost, I've got a couple of minutes left. I know you want to get out of here.
Yeah, me too.
I'm going to have some sort of article for the Aldana Road parcel, I need to talk to Joel Pierce exactly, because obviously it's a little confusing between, because the parcels that we're interested in selling aren't only partially owned by us, so I believe we're going to need to have an article at town meeting to purchase the county share for those so that we could then be-
Then sell the entire parcel.
Yeah.
Do we have a revenue source for that right now?
The only place where I could do it would be the stabilization fund, if we're going to do it at all.
Can we make a motion that once it sells, the money that we took from there goes back to stabilization?
I think we can, yeah, because we, that's in essence what we did with the HOPS, when we, we approved taking money out of the stabilization fund and said in the article that once we receive the state grant money, that it would, that state grant money would go back into stabilization.
Okay.
Or, and also I think it was the same thing for the, we were barring against the friends of HOPS in essence, that we would take the money out of stabilization and then they would reimburse us.
Okay.
Between those things, we could be able to do that. Article nineteen, we need to put more money into the unemployment benefits fund, and then article twenty, this, I was going through stuff and realized this is a request about a year ago to accept a parcel on Bow Street, which I don't believe it actually ever went to town meeting. It's one of the small postage stamp lots, but rather than go through the foreclosure process, I think it's a lot easier for us to actually just get that done this way, accept the parcel.
Does it benefit us to have that property?
It, it, neither one in terms of, is it going to be useful for the town? No, but it's going to cost the town less money to take, get it this way than to go through foreclosure.
Okay. Just a question on that process, when you were talking about the, the work that the assessors were doing.
Over Crystal Lake, yeah.
Do we have a list of all the properties that the town has that is taken by these, that way, where we just accept the property versus foreclose the property?
I don't know, I mean, I, I don't think we have a specific list in the sense of-
It doesn't happen all that often either.
I mean, I'd have to go through the deeds in essence of each of the properties for the town, or they would, to figure out which ones of the towns were, were purchased by a town, which ones were donated, et cetera. So for instance, I think possibly, I don't know if the entire police station property or just the Vaughn Field, I think that may have been a donation as an example.
The Vaughn, Vaughn Field.
Yeah.
How did it properly, was the backing of it properly was?
So, but I'm giving that as an example, is that I'd have, you'd have to go back and research the deeds for each of the properties the town wants to find out. Um, zoning limits are also already mentioned, that the hearing was held, so we'll be able to deal with those at town meeting. I haven't heard anything back on Rufus the Dog case. Supposedly by the next time the board meets, I should get something from Attorney Mayor or from the court. I'm still waiting here for Comcast on changing language in their bills. Same thing with Middleborough and the Halifax Dog incident, I'm going to contact M D R in Middleborough in the next couple of weeks and see if anything's happened with that. And I'm still dealing with the unregistered vehicle. And then we've got two, these fine folks here, we talk about public safety buildings and council aging property or buildings possibly. And if the board would mind indulging for a minute, I just wanted to make two points about building projects and such. One, I know in terms of the school project, when we did over the last three summers, that that was different than how we had done projects in the past for the building, including the school back when it was being built in ninety-four, ninety-five, or ninety-four, ninety-three, ninety-four. What had happened in the interval during the last twenty-five years is that the Masters of School Building Authority had come in, been created, and how the state was going to fund building projects related to schools is going to be very different than it happened. It happened, I believe, back when the elementary school official was put in, that it was basically, here, have some money, get the project done, it's, you're on. They changed it. Basically, they said, we're going to put all this money in here, you're doing it the way we want. So you're not going to get something without following the rules that we want, which is that unlike most of the projects we have here, Municipal and School Building Authority handles those, you're going to have a separate building committee specifically designated by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and you're going to do it that way. We're going to hire the architect, we're going to hire the project manager, you're going to work with these people and you're going to pay them, you'll get reimbursement and everything, but we're doing the hiring. So it was a very different process, and I understand for some people, they felt out of the loop about that, but we had review sessions through all three projects during each of the summers, for instance, those meetings were open to the public, anybody could have attended, including if anybody from the Municipal and School Building Committee were interested. All that information is still public, if they want to see building plans or anything else, you know, they're welcome to take a look at what we did during the last three years. And, you know, I'm sorry if somebody got upset with that. We tried to be as open about the process however as possible, and I remember explaining back, been more than three years ago, it was probably more four or five years ago now, because I know when Joy Blackwood was applying for the original grant, we had to explain all this, that it wasn't going to be done the same way it had been done twenty-five years ago. On the stuff we're looking at right now, in terms of the council on aging and doing, whether it's a police station or a fire station or a combination, my hope is that we're interested in hearing from everybody. And that means whether they're certainly members of the Municipal and School Building Committee, Finance Committee, the board's selectmen, the department heads and such, staff members, residents, it doesn't matter. We're at a point right now where we tried three times, through all the work the Municipal and School Building Committee did and the Council on Aging did, along with the selectmen and the finance, to try and come up with a proposal that was acceptable to the town for the Council on Aging. And it, we struck out. So when we had a meeting a few weeks ago about this, the idea is we're starting from scratch, all the ideas are on the table, and all ideas from anybody are on the table. And my hope is that we don't say to somebody or anybody, sorry, we don't want you saying something, we don't want, think it's your lane that you, you shouldn't be participating in this, because at this point, a good idea is a good idea wherever it's coming from. And I certainly, whether we're going regional, whether we're doing a combination of this, a combination of that, I think all those ideas need to be on the table, we can't at this point say no to something, because if we're saying no already, we're closing a lot of doors that we may need to keep open in terms of working with all the departments, we're working with everybody on these possible projects. And I'm saying that, I'm not saying that for the board, and the board may feel very differently than I do about that.
I'm on board with Charlie then.
I think we should look at everything.
Yeah.
Okay. Who's up first?
Hey, Tom, if you want to. I know that you took the fire chief's, uh, this week with an idea that Scott came up with from the building committee, and it was a creative way of thinking that we hadn't done for a long time. And we just kind of chopped it all over during, during the week, and they had ideas, I had ideas, and all that, so I think what we should do, as well as what Charlie just said, was Steve's invited here and all the department heads invited here, is maybe the, like the chief, fire chief gave here, a report that he put together, he told me more about that building than I know. He's been with it six years, but if every department head sat down, like Highway sat down and say, what are you going to need in the next five years, or what do you want, and we wanted the pack, and the fire chief, and the police chief, and directors, and then sit down at some open meetings and kind of work those things out, and where do you go? I mean, the primary building, you've got to go with it, because it was stepped on for five, six, eight, ten years now, is the Council on Aging, and that's the most building, the most important building that we've neglected for all these years, and that's where the primaries, gold is going to go with, whether it's involved in two or three moves within the department or a single move, that has to be the, the primary objective, I think, with the whole thing in the next couple of years.
In conjunction with this, the Capitol Planning Committee is just kind of organizing again with new members and liaison for that matter, and that was one of the things that is going to happen soon, is to have a sit down with the department heads and try to get a list and, you know, and, not that everyone else can't get a list too, but-
Yeah, and there's, they're building projects and there were also equipment and things like that.
Right, but, but, you know, that's a place where that kind of stuff would come up, if there's a room issue, then you do, you know, look down the road for space or what have you, so, so that'll help a little bit too, that can add to the conversation.
Yeah, that's, I think that's where we've got to go. Do you think one of you guys want to turn it over to the building committee to handle it, or you really have it?
Well, you know, I think that, that has to be an evolutionary thing, we have to see, at, at least in my thinking, just ten seconds here, is if we're going to do a multi-move kind of thing, we have to see where the monies may be available, where maybe we can get some grants for what portion of it, and whatever that requirement is, so I, I think we got to look down the road and see how that's all going to evolve. Chiefs?
Um, so basically, we, we were aware that there was a meeting strictly about the Council on Aging building a couple of weeks ago, we know an idea had been put forward, which was something we had just kind of talked about in general. From my perspective, I know that the Council on Aging building has been the focus and continues to be the focus because there is such a need, but then we stepped back and said, well, we've tried, you know, that's been the priority, there are other departments that have needs also, everything's been put on hold because of that building, is there another way to take a global look at everything that would ultimately get not only the Council on Aging what they need, but address a lot of the other building issues that we have in town? So I can tell you, at the fire station, we have, certainly have spacious issues and lot size issues, but we have, you know, some, some safety concerns, we have some potential liability issues, there's things that eventually will need to be dealt with. The police station, I know he has a, a lot, much larger building, functionally, it's certainly not ideal for a lot of reasons. The Highway Department has serious spaceship, space issues, water has their issues where they're divided, they have their trucks and personnel in one area, they have their water superintendent and office staff in a different area, so there's a lot of other buildings that I think, or departments that have issues, and our thought was maybe by taking a global approach, looking at all of them, we'd be able to get not only the Council on Aging what they need, but address some of the other things at the same time.
Charlie, where do you work down with the other three towns, you were going to talk about regional?
So when I talked to my colleagues a few weeks ago, the idea at least, for a starting point, is simply to have various councils on aging, try and publicize each other's programs more, in a sense of, let's see if we can get a little momentum about seeing programs more, in a sense of, let's see if we can get a little momentum about seeing if the townspeople in each of the three communities are, would be interested in traveling, you know, we don't have to build anything, everything's there, but say, hey, we're doing this workshop in Plimpton on Tuesday, we're doing this fun, fun event in Carver on Thursday, and see whether people wanna travel, because the whole idea with the regional is, I think Harvard's gonna be encouraging people, if we do go that way, to travel to more our central facility, we'll probably do some satellite, I, you know, work in each community, probably try and emphasize the bus service, whether it's the Council on Aging vans in each of the towns, but also even talk to GATRA, for instance, maybe we start running a regular bus service on Route fifty-eight, for instance, I'm just throwing ideas out. But one of the things was that we're going to, before, we're not gonna do a lot until we hire a new Council on Aging director here. The board's doing interviews next week, once that person's on board, to get the director here and her or his equivalents in the other communities together, and start talking about what might be possible, what might not be possible, and see how much enthusiasm there is in each of the communities to go regional. My hope is maybe by the end of the year, we'll have a better sense of, is it, there's, is there enough momentum, enough interest to actually start planning on a regional concept? Or is it, just play it loose, like, you know, as I mentioned, how, do more publicity, because we've had people in Halifax that, they go to Ducksbury, or they go to East Bridgewater, or they go to Middleborough or something, for Council on Aging facilities, not, you know, no one's checking your ID at the door and saying, nope, you're not a resident, you can't go here, because all these facilities receive state funding to some extent, so everybody's eligible to go, just like you can use libraries, for instance. But the question is gonna be, is there enough interest that we actually combine forces? There are a number, two or three groups of towns out in the western part of the state, they're smaller than we are, that have done something like this, they're all various levels of agreements and such about how it's funded, who runs it, things like that, so it's certainly possible to do, there's nothing legally impossible. It's simply going to be, at some point, we'll have to do a go or no-go as to whether we want to do some regional concept.
Gordon?
I think what Chief Verres drew up for the, for the fire station would definitely be useful for all the departments to do, so that we have a long-term project goal of what the, each department's needs are, and what their current building situations are, and where they are, and I think, looking ahead and trying to do multiple moves or regionalization, I think that's where we need to go.
T. Sheriff?
So, Benny's having a homework?
No, you can do it in the office.
Oh, okay. To echo what, what Chief Verres mentioned, you know, the police department's needs are very different, we're actually working in a building that's, has more space than we actually need, just the layout, it's not, you know, conducive to, to police work right now. That may, maybe in two thousand and one it was, but it's just the way all the roofs are broken up, we used to have a dispatch center, we don't, no longer have that anymore, so I would probably be looking at, you know...
Reconfigure.
Changing in a floor plan, because the second floor, other than the meeting room, we've been, you know, very, you know, barely used that, that space, so one floor thing for us would, you know, would be ideal, so, you know, conjunction with, we're looking at, like, doing a joint police and fire complex, and then having the other departments do the move, like, talk about it.
Bless you.
Bless me.
So that's, you know, I, I, you know, like Gordon was mentioning, I think, come up with a report of our needs, what, you know, we're kinda envisioning and bringing to the board, I guess.
I, I understand looking at it as a global thing, but we, one way or another, somewhere it's gonna be, you have to have a priority list, who gets, who gets waited on first, and that's an issue that we've, we've had at town meeting, is that unless it's organized and everybody is standing behind it, whether they like the idea or not, they're standing behind it, it's not going anyplace. John, you know that, you know, and that's the problem. We've tried several ways of getting things done, and I agree with you, when, when we moved, when the police department, the fire department were one and the same, it was interesting. They do it over in, I think in Ducksbury, or is it Norwell?
Norwell's one public.
They have one public safety building. You know, and that seems to be, at least, and I haven't really investigated, but it seems to be functioning well in the times that I've been there. You know, so, I think what we need to do is to look at the overall plan, and then decide on a priority list, who goes first.
I think a lot, a lot of that who goes first too, is to establish, say you put the police and fire in one particular building, new building, well, what would that building estimate to cost? Okay, against, where they all need space and everything else, and what the town can afford, where the highway departments say needed more garage space or truck space, is definitely gonna be a lot less expensive than a police-fire combination. Those two buildings are quite expensive to build, but against a COA, which might be equivalent to the highway department, expense-wise, to do that space, and that's what's gonna be looked at in those reports too. And prioritize, you know, you can't, you can't put a ten thousand, ten million dollar building against a three million dollar, you know what I mean, it's, it's, and then you have to figure out the need.
Yeah, there's a lot of things to look at, I, highway might be, and I'm speaking out of turn here, because I don't really know, highway might be cured if water department vehicles could get out, maybe we could find a relocation for the, for the water department vehicles, I mean, at, behind, behind the current building, maybe a garage or something out there.
Well, that's where we bought the steel to put together. We need that square, that's a number of square feet.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to look at this thing, and, and we should kick 'em all around for a while, 'cause I don't think anybody realistically expects to present anything at this annual town meeting. So we get time, but we should explore every possibility between now and then, because we're gonna get asked. And to your point, John, I, I mean, I see a combination building somewhere over ten million dollars, and I, I don't...
More than that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just...
That was a, well, that was a low figure.
I'm being, I know, I'm, I'm being conservative, I, I, but, to your point, I, I, you know, that, ten, ten to twelve million dollars, I think I did some rough math this afternoon, and add about three hundred and twenty-something dollars to the average tax bill.
Sounds about right.
Is that about right? So, I mean, I don't see people swallowing that any too quick, and myself included. So, so we have to come up with something creative, and something that the town can support, and, and if we have to do a piecemeal, which I think is where we're gonna end up going, in my opinion, but if we can come up with some alternatives in the meantime, to, to make it all work, and that's...
They might be able to put a combination of two departments to work out their needs.
Right.
At a reasonable amount of money.
And then still have enough money to do something bigger that we need to...
So they might draw up a ball and big money or something.
Right.
But they gotta figure out who's gonna control, who's gonna put this on here, is it gonna be you guys, or is it gonna be the Building Committee, the Fire Chief?
Why can't we work together?
Yeah, well, I mean, some...
Yeah, some combination thereof, and then we have to look and see what kinda monies might, might be available.
Yeah.
And what their requirements are, but, but, I mean, we've got time to do it, and, but we shouldn't waste any time doing it either.
Yeah, 'cause I, I called Sandy, 'cause I thought the school board hadn't gone out yet, and she said, told me it was, and why, we didn't see a big increase in our taxes much because of valuation of the properties in town.
Yeah, the tax rate actually went down three cents.
Right.
But, but everybody's values went up.
Tax bills gotta go up.
Right.
But...
That's how it works, yeah.
They covered that, that big expense over the school pretty good.
Yeah, and we have not had a lot of new growth, and that's been an issue, I mean, there isn't a lot going on. So, so that avenue of revenue has kinda dried up for the time being, so.
And the other aspect is, you've seen, so at least, my time on the Finance Committee, you, you were at about a million dollars for special needs, for tuition, transportation. You're at two and a half million dollars eight years later. So when we look at what's been happening in the town, there's been a tremendous increase in spending, it's just been at the, at, for education for special needs, I mean, the one and a half million dollars towards a project would be huge if that, if that number drops down, we'd have money to do building projects if you see that number start to drop.
You're absolutely right, that, that is the croaker, that is the croaker, and it keeps growing and growing, and, and you have no control over it. And, and I'm not, you know, saying anything bad about anybody, but somebody happens to move in town that has needs, and that's it, I mean, they could be anywhere from thirty thousand to a couple hundred thousand.
And we don't negotiate the contracts with the teachers organization, we have nothing to do with that.
Well, that's really not the problem, because a lot, the more expensive kids are being sent out.
Out of district, yes.
Out of district, yeah.
Yeah, but, but one thing does come up to play is when we're looking to hire more staff, when we're looking to make improvements on the building, or repairs on the building, that pulls money away from anything else. So, the bottom line is, I, I think that, my personal feeling is, that we ought to put an extension on the existing building to such time we can get the money, otherwise, you never, it's, it's not gonna be of good use. And unfortunately, coming from the Midwest, the attitude for most people in the town, and Chief and I talked about it the other day, if there could be five people in town, and I, and that's the whole population, but they want their own fire station, their own police station, it's just, it's a New England thing, and we've gotta get past that, especially if we talk about regionalizing any track, but we did it with our...
Dispatch.
Dispatch unit, and it's working, to my knowledge, it's working well. So it can be done.
But we have a large financial incentive, both in terms of state money coming in, but also proportionally what we were gonna spend, we spent, we're, we're spending, without even the, a subsidy, we're spending only a hundred and fifty thousand or so, and that's still less than it was several years ago.
And we're on two forty. And we couldn't attract any employees, because we couldn't pay enough, so it was, it was a win-win for, for the town.
The one thing I'll ask boards now, what you know, is that, any idea that you have, please put it in writing, or do the research on it, and so when we present it, that it's not, well, I'm gonna look into it, we've already looked into it, and it's already done, because that's, that's, you can't work on an idea unless you know what the cost, or what the facility's gonna be.
I do like John's idea, John Campbell's idea about going back to the departments and asking about space needs, because that's really the starting point.
Yes, yeah, reach out to everybody, and then we get something back, we set up some time to meet again, sooner rather than later, and, and kinda figure out a path to go forward, at least to discuss everything.
What I was trying to give you, are you gonna do that, or is the Motor Committee gonna do that? Now, is when we get the contact with each department head and request these, this information from them, and centralize and locate it, and then we'll have open meetings and all that, but somebody has to be kinda in charge of it, you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, we can do that, we can send it out, we've got Capital Planning meeting shortly too, and we can disseminate all that information.
We'll all go back to the board of selection.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to, but...
I think, I think on the building space, you should make, you should make use of the Building Committee.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Now, is, so we'll send a letter from the Building Committee, asking Steve here, fire department.
Yeah.
What are your needs in the next five years on buildings? I don't care what you want, trucks, just wanna know what you need.
Well, except that, but space, part of the space thing is on, is how many trucks you're gonna have, I know for...
Well, yeah, if you're gonna add, you know, five new trucks, you need...
Well, or how much space do you need, for instance, I know that Keith, you know, that he believes they're maxed out with the water department section over at the highway bond right now, and so he's finding it attractive if there was a space to move to, as people mentioned, both for office and for their equipment, that's attractive to him.
Yeah, so it's a square footage.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Anything, yeah, do that, yeah, yeah, it doesn't matter who comes from, the, the Building Committee be appropriate at this point, sure.
Could we make those just publicly available, so we can...
Which, the sp, the space needs?
Yeah, once, like, just basically just to ask departments to, you know, evaluate their facility, and then, just so we can have...
Yeah, I mean, all the, all the information that's going to John and the Building Committee, that's all public information, yeah, and when we'll try, you know, we'll get it disseminated to everybody else.
Yeah, we can set it, we'd like this information by October thirtieth.
Yeah, we wanna get...
Whenever we have October thirtieth, we'd have a meeting, and all those reports that everybody sent in would be a, a pile would be all put together.
Yeah, we kinda have an idea of what the needs are at the senior center, but, you know, keeping in mind we have to, we're hiring somebody and we have a new...
And I would not neglect our friends across the street over at the school, even though the enrollment is less than it was, let's say, about ten years ago, what they see in terms of space needs, and that we just did the work there, but I, you know, if they're looking at...
Five years, ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there, there is a plan that's being worked on.
Yeah, and then the same thing for the library, for that matter, I mean, I don't, I have no idea, you know, it's been, obviously, it was built, now it's been twenty-five years, you know, what the library's gonna need in terms of, you know, libraries are different than they were twenty-five years ago, the internet really didn't exist as an example. So, how do you, if you built a library in twenty nineteen, what would it look like, how many, how much space would you have for this equivalent population?
Well, we'll send a letter out anyway, they're in charge of the building, that hasn't...
Yeah, that makes sense. Super Steel needs a twentieth-century wing now, along with a nineteenth and eighteenth century.
We won't send one.
Okay, anything new to be added at this time? Well, I'd like to thank you all for coming in, and, and being civil.
This was useful, this, this is good. Can Pete, why, come on up, if you can, come on up, yeah. I got people turning the pumpkins at nine o'clock, so if we even get a, I know you were at nine, but...
You, you, you were, you were afraid to come up without having a bodyguard, you got camelers and...
He's got two, two bodyguards.
You guys left the swamis outside, the bats, and all?
That's it.
Yeah.
We don't hope to use them.
We'll try not to give you a reason for either.
You, you okay?
Yeah, why?
You were walking on a step there.
It happens.
What we're looking to do, and we'll keep you brief, is just to make a, a couple of adjustments up in Farm Playground next to the police station, we wanna replace the, the old batting cage that we had, which was more of a portable, and Adam kinda worked together every year for us, and it's kinda, a couple of storms have flipped it up and over, sent it across the parking lot, we've tried to anchor it, it's not, the poles are a mess, so...
So universal.
Yeah, it's versatile, it's not everybody wants it, though, it's, it's a life of its own, so, uh, we wanna replace it with something better, and, um, the only change would be, it actually will be a little smaller, would be, uh, we wanna have the, the upright poles, and I have a drawing, a couple pictures for you, be permanent, they would be twelve-foot out of the ground, black, two-inch pipe, there would be eight of them, two rows of four, I have a whole diagram for you, there will be a cable system in the top, beginning of the season, we hope the netting up, and at the end of the season, we take it down, pull store in the shed. It's just not safe anymore, what we have, and we have a, a company on Dex Sports that is, is already giving us an idea of what we can do, they'll give us the dimensions, and we've talked to inline fence and got a quote on having those pipes put in the ground, and, um...
And you figured financially, you...
We'll uncover everything, everything, yeah, we do fundraising at tournament, we raise money for those types of things, I've talked to Steve, Steve's still here, the highway department will help us out, if you notice, we have some wolders that are laid out these days, we're gonna try to get a few more, but those wolders prevent any cars from driving into it, plows hitting it, it's a pretty, pretty safe area.
Good.
It will have green turf on the bottom of the inside, which a lot of them do now, which makes it safer for the kids and stuff.
Artificial or raw?
Artificial, outdoor turf, yeah.
Okay.
Jonathan spoke with somebody, said, they've got a good deal on some stuff that'll save us some money, it's, it's used, but it's still...
Still decent.
Good shape, and, uh, basically, you know, someone handy like Adam climbs up there, puts up at the beginning of the year, and...
Everybody needs a climber.
Well, usually, there's often be a little bit of climbing, so that's pretty much it.
So you let Paul button, you do all the hard work.
That's it.
Exactly, I'm not very handy, Adam, Adam fixes everything around, it works.
It's all good.
So that's what we're looking to do there, we have, um, we'd like to do it this, this fall if we could, so we can have it ready for April, when everything starts up again. Any questions on that, I have a folder for you guys on that, leave that review in the direction for this.
As long as it doesn't interfere with the function of the police department, or the highway department getting their things done, there, there's no issue there?
No, it'll be after work, volunteer.
Okay.
And it's, um, it just, it's the same exact, if you look at, I have some pictures in there, but it's not gonna be any bigger than the, the unit, it might actually be a little lower.
So it's eight by what, eight by four?
No, it's actually, what's in there, it's fourteen by sixty, fourteen by sixty-five, it's in the dimensions, same as what we have up there now, just might be a little thinner than it was.
That's the car.
Those are the best...
Gee, I don't know why you'd wanna replace that, so...
Yeah, it's gonna look better than that.
So, so the players that, that misbehave, they get locked up in this?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, locked in, yeah, that's right.
And I'll tell you, not to speak for Pete, but we, we really felt it in softball this year not having our cage.
Couldn't use it this year.
Couldn't really use it this year, and it was, it made for a tougher season for Halifax softball, so it'd be good to get that back.
This looks nothing but good, so I, I don't have any issue with this.
And I like seeing the kids involved, and if they get something other than going down the street using it on the corner. Yeah, so, I, I would propose to allow the rec committee to develop a new batting cage on Vaughn Field.
It's not through the rec committee, though, it's through girls' softball. We went over a show that we were doing.
Why you want to be chauvinistic?
We did a real difference thing, this is us, we paid for this, but.
How was the smash this year?
It was a big one.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I saw just the cars were just crazy.
And they were parked, they were parked on our lawn and on the driveway.
I think it was 106 games in 48 hours.
Wow, and you had the weather too, so that.
And you guys went all by one?
Yeah. This was out of everyone. 15th year, and this was the easiest one that was.
Has it been that long?
Any out of control coaches, the parents were nice, it was, we walked out of there Sunday night saying, wait a minute.
I mean, something's wrong.
Everything we could call it, it all around.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Parents were unbelievable now.
I'll understand the motion at this time.
I would make the motion to approve.
More than happy to second that.
I'll third it.
Thanks, guys.
All in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen, thanks for your work.
We got one more.
Oh, 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 I was trying to get rid of you.
I'll get out and I'll make the square. What we want to do, and I know I've spoken with some of you guys over the years, and I didn't want to step on Hops's toes, but I, Vaughn Playground has more games a week now than the elementary school, if you can believe that. Our softball league is so big, we go so much, there's no place up there for the younger kids to play. Now, the teenagers, the older brothers, they skateboard and they do all that, and Hops is great for that. So I've had this idea that I've been talking to Dick Steele about it for years, how could we fit in a small little playground area? Something with a small climbing structure, maybe some swings, so the parents can lock their kids in that, and they can watch the games, and the kids aren't running out in the parking lot.
At least keep an eye on them without having to be on top of them.
Yeah, and not in the skate park.
The teenagers don't want the little ones running.
No, 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 no.
Two of them escape, one and everything, so. What we proposed, and we said, we talked to Dick and I talked to Steve, was we found an area next to the skate park on the grass at the bottom of the hill, that we were, we were offering to basically finance a, like a 30 by 25 fenced-in area. Steve had taken out the yellow unit at the elementary school slide structure, put that aside. If we can put that in there, we'll do, you know, wood chips, and I have a price for inline fence for a four-foot black chain link with a gate, they're going to piggyback it right off of the skate box, so it'll save us a quarter of the money, we don't going to do a fence.
Yeah, share a fence, yeah.
Same thing, girls' softball will pay for everything, we just, this one we're going to need a little help from the town, and I've talked to Steve about that, and he could probably feel a little, just a little more with the putting it in and cementing it in, which is beyond our ability. Again, it's only one unit, it's not as big as Hops', it's one unit. If we can afford it and space allows, we'd like to put a swing set, we just don't know, you know, we have to.
You just want to make sure that any equipment you put in there is approved.
Function, function.
And I have one of those too. Not as good as the other one, there's only a couple pictures of it.
And you're going to have separate, separate restrooms in there too?
Yeah, cable.
Because you know if you're like little kids.
Well, the way we're, we're putting it, you can see both fields perfectly, so if your daughter's playing, you can stand in there with your little one, and you can watch both fields perfectly. It's a lot like where you go, you know, at the elementary school, you might go to Hops' right, go over to the red playground, you can't see all the fields. This is, if you know Vaughn's laid out, you can see everything right from there, so.
And you got law enforcement right around the corner.
And that's a very good thing to happen.
In case the youngsters get a lot of.
We never had a problem up there in the years we've had that.
I can't see.
Yeah, I was going to come up there and watch some of the games, I couldn't find a parking place. So it's going to be laid out on the far side next to the hill?
Yeah, we're not sure, honestly, we might come a little, maybe five to 10 yards this way or that way, we want to kind of lay it out with cones to see exactly, there's enough for the kids to still sled, and put it right there.
Is that dry over that area over there?
Yeah, that's, that's all right.
There's a well at shortstop of the first field, there's still an area, but that area over there is perfect.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't have any issues.
I'd make a motion to allow softball to build the playground.
Absolutely second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Well, you're going to work it out with Steve.
David Brady was.
All in favor?
Aye.
So happy birthday belated Steve.
Thanks for that.
Oh, it's your birthday.
Well, I told you I would talk to you before I spoke for you. Your hair, your hair's, that's even better.
That's not the binder.
What's that? This is my stuff.
We thought, we thought there was one more.
Charlie, you want to keep that stuff?
Yeah, we can keep this.
Yeah, the guy will pop, you'll be good.
Well, great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. We'll keep you updated.
Thanks a lot.
And watch the camel kid, because I've known him for years. He's a lot like his father.
Was he on the soccer team?
Yeah, he was.
Oh, absolutely. He plays soccer. I've more than played baseball.
And guess who his first coach was?
Not this year.
Really?
Okay, so you want the dust to hide coffee?
Had older brothers, man. Walked out there, I thought I was with Paul Button and his whole family, it was like.
My favorite line is, one Campbell brothers, six, three, one's six, one, and one's five, nine, and they're all 250.
All 250.
Adam, was Kevin on that team too?
Ooh, I don't know if Kevin was, Paul Boldy was.
Paul's coaching U8 Girls right now.
Yeah. And T-ball.
U8 Girls, and is he doing T-ball?
Yeah.
T-ball.
You only got me for rookie ball.
Horrible.
I said that too.
All right, all right, gentlemen, unless there's something further, Pam's got to get home, she says, she's got to walk her dog.
That's not me.
All right, all right, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, take care. All right, I don't have anything for executive session.
I did have a question about previous executive session, and we had talked about, I can't think of his name, down off of Cedar Street. Have we had any more communication?
Oh, you're talking about Long Marlin?
Yeah, have we had any more communication?
No, I can check with council. I know that that was still on an active case, I'll check. So that's it, we're done?
Unless somebody wants to carry on, I will even change the motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? What flavor?